Hi, ladies and gentlemen, this is the monthly board supervisor leading for April the 20th, 7:00 PM. We have a quorum and we seem to be ready to go.
Sure. Um gracious Father, we do love you and praise you and just want to be able to celebrate this great day you've given to us. Um it's just such a wonderful time of year when we glorify.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Taylor, uh, do you have any reason to amend the agenda?
No, sir, we don't have any, uh, item to amend the agenda for.
All right.
When we present, we approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That motion to approve.
I'm sorry. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I approve of minutes from March the 20th to regular, March 25th, uh, continuing the budget workshop.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, like sign? Motion carries. I approve of financial report, report for March, uh, accountability balance sheet. Everybody have a chance to go over it?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, group all of these together, all four reports together, and I move that we approve.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Disapprove, like sign? Public comments, this is a time for public comments, if anyone has anything that they want to talk about, we'd appreciate it, you come up to the microphone.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Allison and I live in Jetersville.
What's your full name?
I'm sorry, Allison Cruz, and I live in Jetersville on Perkinson Road. I'm here tonight to ask all of us to remember that water is the lifeblood of our mother, our planet Earth. Water is the lifeblood of our own bodies. Remember air that we breathe, remember the spark from our heart that fills our lungs with life. Remember the sun that shines on us all and the moon that pulls us all. Remember the earth beneath our feet, this planet we all call home. Everything that surrounds us is also inside of us, the microcosm is the macrocosm. We need to respect, protect, and love ourselves and our planet, it's a blessings to all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like speak? One more time, anyone else? Public comment section is now closed. We want the staff committees, organizations, reports, and presentations, VDOT monthly status report. David Whitaker?
You have in your package the monthly, uh, sheet from VDOT, uh, be happy to answer any questions you may have on that, that summary report, and Lee McKnight of VDOT is here with us tonight, and I know he'd love to entertain some.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, members of the board, my name is Lee McKnight, uh, I'm with Rebecca Worley, we are assistants at Chesterfield Residency, um, for VDOT, and I'm here to give you your monthly board report. Uh, we have begun brush cutting on various routes, our secondary mowing schedule has begun for this year, we started in the Manboro area of Amelia, uh, we repaired various signs, we did begin in the month of March on the rural rustic project 603 Poorhouse Road, um, so we're getting that going, we started grading and we're going to do some tree trimming on that road, and then hopefully we'll get going in earnest here shortly, um, with the nuts and bolts. In April, we are continuing to patch potholes, the secondary, secondary, the secondary mowing schedule will begin in earnest, we'll continue rural rustic work on 603, and there's a washout repair on Route 658 at Fonz Creek that we have scheduled to do in April. Construction, we did finish 637 and 643 bridge replacements, those roads are now open, uh, the service treatment patching is completed and the service treatment will begin the week of 15 April, which, so it's already begun, and it should be complete by the end of May. Uh, we began a pipe replacement project on Route 360 at Jetersville, um, so that should be complete early May as well, and then I think you may have heard Folks Bridge, um, the bridge at Folks Bridge going over into Cumberland County, it will be closed beginning 22 April, uh, for repair, it should be closed for no more than three days, um, at that location, so.
Let me ask you.
Do you have any further questions, I'm here to answer them.
What are you planning on doing to the bridge this time?
There's a pier cap, I believe, that needs to be repaired on the bridge, so they did an inspection, that bridge is actually in Cumberland County's jurisdiction, uh, but they did an inspection, they identified it, and they chose to go ahead and close it beginning Monday and repair it, um, to get that thing open and to traffic.
Very good. When you fool with that bridge, you fool with the public.
Yes, sir.
They like it. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions?
Uh, yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ms. McKnight, uh, on the 609 Grub Hill Church Road?
Yes, sir.
Uh, understand we're supposed to, to resurface that starting back at 636 Low Door Road and come all the way out to 360?
Yes, sir, it'll be complete all the way from, well, I guess, Genitoe all the way to 360.
And that's really going to be done?
Yes, sir, it is going to be done.
Well, boy, everybody, the ones that live there and those who come through, oh, already, okay, well, I'm, I'm looking forward to that, and, uh, uh, on Poorhouse Road, 603?
Yes, sir.
Your, your intention is to complete that when?
Um.
Weather permitting, understand?
Well, we have a completion date of hope, at least by one October, but it should be much well before that, that date, I don't want to give you a hard and fast date, but it will be complete by October, like I said, should be complete sometime in the summer.
Real great, okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman? Excuse me, Mr. McKnight?
Oh, sorry.
Have you had any complaints about the flashing yellow lights on 360?
I have not heard any yet, sir.
Because I have.
Okay.
Is, so you're not planning on making any changes with those?
So the, the flash, you're, you're referring to Chula?
The flashing yellow light on Chula Road and Food Line.
So they did do an engineering study on those intersections and, and really throughout the district, and at those two locations, there's, they identified those two locations because there's so much site distance, there's plenty of site distance for a, for a flashing yellow, they, I did ask about them, um, during peak hours, they will revert back to the protected left, green left, so they're really designed to help operations during non-peak hours, so, for example, in the middle of the night when you get stuck at the, at the light and there's no one coming in either direction, that's what it's designed to help alleviate some of those situations.
Oh, I get it, I get it, and I personally love them, but there's a lot of people concerned about them, there's been some wrecks already.
Okay, I'll take a look at those wrecks.
Also, do you have any, uh, schedule for the 360 bridges? Are you going to repair those or replace those?
Yeah, yes, sir, the, the, these bridges right out here, yeah, they should begin next year, I believe.
Next year. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Mr. Whitaker?
Oh, that's all on that, that.
Have VDOT six-year plan, public hearing?
I included in your package a summary sheet and then the documents that VDOT needs to, to go forward with the, the six-year plan is scheduled, there's nothing new added this year, it's a continuation of what we've been doing over the last few years, and this year it looks like it's Selma Road is in, in the queue to be done this year under the six-year plan, or FY '20, so that would start in July, uh, didn't, do have a, a change to your summary sheet, it shows as Archer's Creek needs to be done under, uh, the rural addition projects, that is complete, that's, uh, excuse me, operator, operator error on that one. There's a copy of the proposed resolution for this inside of it, and, uh, the construction program estimate, uh, allocation sheets are attached to your package. One thing that's a little different this year is the funding issues, and the staff is reckon, recommending that all revenue sharing projects on the secondary road plans be included in the six-year plan, and, and this is a, a cost center thing that's inside the six-year plan that helps pay for some stuff, and if we go ahead and include that as you go through the process tonight, that will, uh, help some funding issues on the VDOT side. It does allow the, the money to flow in either direction, from six-year to revenue sharing and revenue sharing to six-year, I don't see any transfers going from our money to VDOT because they've been sending this money back each year, they, they've been pretty good about that, I think over the last few years, it's about $60,000 that they've given back to the county that's gone into the capital improvement, uh, pot of money. And Mr. McKnight is more versed in all of this than I am, so if you have any questions, I'm sure he's going to help everyone first.
I did want to mention one thing, Buckskin Creek Road is identified to be going in 2020, 2021, there are fully funded in 2020, 2021, there is opportunity to potentially move that up depending on, um, what, what happens with Selma Road this year, um, but other than that, it should remain pretty much unchanged.
Any questions?
You need to open the public hearing.
All right, at this point in time, we'll close the public hearing.
You got to open it, open it.
I can't hear you, boy. All right, uh, the public hearing is now open for, uh, the secondary roads construction plan. Anyone care to speak?
Hello, um, my name is Cheryl Lindsaycom and I live at 20200 Genitoe Road, and my concern is, like, the paving and the sides of the roads on Genitoe not being big enough to accommodate big trucks and us sedans, you know, the big trucks are in our lane, they don't have anywhere to go, they can't go off the road and there's no shoulders, and that's one of my main concerns because I travel that road all the time, but also, you know, like, 636, which is Low Door, that road is in horrible condition to drive one, you can't really stay in your lane, you have to ride the middle or the other side because the road is so torn up, so what exactly is the six-year plan on maintaining the roads over here?
Well, we got you in the hot seat, you know.
No, no worry, well, I have good news, 636 Low Door Road is on our schedule to be paved this year, so.
Perfect, that's great.
So that should be corrected, Genitoe has been on our radar, thanks to Mr. Gleason, uh, for a while, and, and we are, we are scheduling additional work to be done on that road, trying to correct some of the potholes and some of the dips in, in certain areas, especially on the locations out towards the western part of Genitoe.
Right, so, should I just give you my comment sheet for Genitoe Road?
Sure.
And just so you can have it, since you're the guy that's going to be in the hot seat?
Yes, ma'am.
And what is your name?
Lee McKnight.
Okay, Cheryl, nice to meet you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Anyone else have anything to say about highways, uh, roads? Quiet bunch. All right, we'll be closing the public hearing on the roadways, and next we'll go, before we go, uh, if you'll give me one second, uh, Captain Moore, would you, uh, introduce your two grandsons and your daughter, please?
All right.
We have two visitors from the, uh, Boy Scouts, they're getting their badge tonight, Captain Moore's got grandsons, and, uh, here, we'll introduce them to you now.
Well, my grandsons are Luke Royal and James Royal, and my daughter's Janet Southall, married Mike Southall in Jetersville. James and Luke are here as part of a mayor's base working on for the Boy Scouts, they have a candidate.
We thank you and thank you for coming, boys, we appreciate you being here. We can be sitting up here shortly.
Mr. Gleason, we've got that resolution, okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that we, uh, adopt the resolution as, uh, as printed in our board book for, um, VDOT for the six-year plan.
All right, all in.
End this, end the, the construction program, uh, estimate allocation sheets.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Next we have Amelia, thank you, gentlemen, ma'am. Actually, we have Amelia County School Board, uh, participation, and we have, uh, superintendent of schools.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, uh, this week is spring break for Amelia County Public Schools, for the staff and administration, so there are very few of us around this week, um, but we do hope everyone is enjoying their break before our end-of-the-year SOL testing begins very shortly. Uh, I'm pleased to report to you this evening that our March 31st ADM calculation is 1706.76, our budget was calculated based on an ADM of 1707, so this is good news, this is good news. Um, you also have before you this evening, I believe it's number 18 in your book, a request from our school board chairman, Mr. Glenn Wilkerson, for a change to an appropriation, I'll give you just a little brief background about this and then hopefully answer any questions that you have. This change is requested because Amelia County Public Schools has some carryover funds from 2017 for titles one and four, and these need to be carried into this year's budget. In addition, this year's Title IV grant allocation was higher than projected in the original Amelia County Public Schools budget, so an addition needs to be made for this grant as well. Now, federal funds are allocated in the fall of each year and have a two-year expenditure window, so the budgeting process used by Amelia County Public Schools only accounts for the anticipated current year's grant award and does not take into account any unused money from a previous year's grant. Since expenditures from these grants are reimbursable, requiring no local match, carryover does not impact our budget, and we are seeking this approval so that the line items within our budget, um, for these grants may be increased. So you have three things on the form in front of you, the first is the Title IV Student Support and Academic Grant, the sum of $5,854.78 from the 2017 Title IV Grant was not expended prior to the end of last year, so approval is needed to authorize carryover of these funds from last year's grant to this year's fiscal budget. Also with Title IV, but in this year, the 2018 budget, the grant application was originally written for $10,000 because the 17 grant was $10,000, but as many school divisions, um, found out this year, the allocations, uh, actually, the appropriations were greater than that, and we received an additional $14,120.83, bringing the total for that grant to $24,120.83. So the appropriation change request is needed from you, um, to put these additional funds into this year's budget. And finally, the Title I Grant, um, we are requesting a carryover of $33,386.10 in Title I funds not used during the 17 school year to be added into this year's. Again, these do not require local match, they are reimbursable funds, and these grants last, uh, most of them are, are a two-year grant, so, um, would be happy to answer any questions that you have about our request.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No, no question.
No question, Mr. Chairman, you want to go ahead and, uh, ask to deal with the, that request now?
I'll, I'll make motion then that, uh, the Amelia County School Board, that submitted
of the request for supplemental appropriation to reimburse the school board for expenditures, approved by the Virginia Department of, uh, Education, and, uh, again, it's been noted that no local match is required, yeah, I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have Maplewood Landfill, Ray Yel, uh, Director of Environmental Management, reports on activities at Maplewood Landfill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm here tonight to stoppage on the activities at Maplewood Landfill, currently, uh, rail contract that started this month, April, is now bringing in 2,000 tons of, of waste a day, that will bring our host fees on a monthly, sorry, on a monthly basis to about $150,000. The contract, the, um, waste management said is, is, looks like it's going to be a 10-year contract, so in light of that additional tonnage, they're busy working on two 15-acre new cells at the landfill to accommodate that waste, uh, they're busy doing that, they've hired 10 additional operators and they've got another six in the queue trying to be hired, so.
Very good.
So if there's any questions?
Good, Mr. Chairman, good news, good news.
Sir, yes, sir.
Glad to hear that.
Sounds like you've been busy.
Very busy, very busy.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, I appreciate it. Next, we have Department of Finance, uh, the public hearing at this point in time, uh, public hearing is being held to hear the comments on the 2020 budget. Anyone have any comments?
Are there any preliminary comments before?
Uh, no, sir, we've, we've advertised the budget, uh, everything, uh, properly done, uh, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, but the budget that was advertised was one that was authorized after that last work session.
Okay.
Very good.
That's good.
Okay, anyone like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matthew Brown and I'm a concerned District III taxpayer, it's that time of year again when we do our dance, budget time, we all know our place is on the dance floor by now, at least we should, y'all will clamor for a tax increase and cry a powerful sad song capable of rivaling Hank Williams Sr. about all of the great programs this year that so desperately require resources, that's code speak for money, in case anyone wasn't quite sure, or perhaps you've even under a state or federal mandate, or some other political jargon that's meant to keep taxpayers in the dark about true motives, while the steady train of encroachment continues on down the line toward absolute control of every citizen's daily life. As far as mandates go, guys and girls, let's keep in mind that we've been in this very room and heard tell of mandates to clean water towers every six years, eight years, 15 years, shucks, who can keep it all straight? The point is, no one seemed to care enough about those mandates through the years to really do much about them, so I'm hoping we won't hear too much about any of the others tonight, I mean, am I right, or am I right? For my part, and the part of other concerned taxpayers, we will attempt to shine the light of day and common sense on y'all's past track record, hoping you all will see just how odd and uncomfortable your requests should make you feel, I'll try to keep this quick and simple, but I can't swear it'll be painless. This board has proposed a $1.85 million increase in the budget for next year, this board has also proposed a one cent increase in local taxes, maestro, please cue the music, the dance has begun. Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it this board and administration that was just quoted in the paper as saying they'd spent $32,000 taxpayer dollars on an internet study that they then deemed useless? Mama mia, that's a pricey mistake. Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it this board and administration that up until very recently was running full tilt towards piling on $2 million or more of debt to the Amelia taxpayers for a new water tower? Y'all touted this study, that study, water commission reports, state mandates, and health department regulations to try to ram that one through, in the end, you've settled for just $200,000 of water bladders to quench your thirst, that's a savings of about $1.8 million right there, but it never would have turned out that way if concerned taxpayers hadn't henpecked the tar out of y'all at every turn. So gentlemen, when you come before us and propose a tax increase and a spending increase, I just have to ask, how and why on earth should or would taxpayers be in favor of this? Lest anyone forget, you almost frittered away $1.8 million for a tower you all now admit we didn't really need, $32,000 you openly admit was useless. Guys, come on, you keep shooting us, as well as yourselves, in the foot, and now you want us to give you more bullets? I respectfully ask that my District III supervisor and all of the supervisors reject the proposals for a tax increase and for a budget increase, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, so I just had some questions in the budget about a couple items, and, um, maybe since Ray is here, or anybody can address those, would be great. Um, one was clarity about the landfill investment fund, um, the way it was listed, it looked like we were requesting money, but I think that's actually revenue, is that correct?
I would, uh, I would prefer to get the list of questions and get them answered later, yeah, Carla, Carla, help me with those.
We'll respond to you later.
Okay, let me just see what my other questions were, if there weren't, another one just related to Piedmont Senior Resources, and I just, um, wanted to, I've had the opportunity to get to be with a lot of the seniors and I'm very thankful for that, and I just really want Amelia seniors, I want all the seniors in the whole district, uh, more and more and more, I don't see a lot of veterans, I would love to see more veterans and just, um, something to grow on here in Amelia, too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So send those to you or?
Anyone else would like to comment on the budget? All right, I'll ask twice more, anyone else want to comment on the budget? Anyone else? We'll go to older new business, committee appointments, the following appointments need to be made, workforce development. We have two expirations. Gentlemen, have anything?
Mr. Chairman, we've made some calls, but we don't have any, anybody to report back from the staff as of now.
Amelia Committee?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I did have a talk with Deborah Crowder, and she says Don Garrett can be renewed if he wants to. Have you talked to him?
I have talked to Don Garrett, and Don Garrett says he's retired, that he will bridge the gap until we get somebody, but he does not want to continue.
All right. We'll pass these by.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one vacancy on Amelia Day Committee on District Four, and I've got some I'm working on. I'll have that ready for the May meeting.
Very good.
I would say the same thing with District Five. I've got a couple people that I'll be, have that heard back from. I don't want to nominate them at this point, but I should have that.
Very good. So next, next meeting?
Next meeting.
All right. We also have John Tyler Community College. We have an expiration there. We'll wait on that one also.
We've also made a call on that. We haven't heard back.
Very good. Next, we go to Morphio Mines, request for a letter of support, letter from the Department of Conservation and Recreation expressing support of Morphio Mines becoming a state park is being requested by Samuel Young Dunaway Jr. Anyone have anything on that? Did we have a letter?
We haven't drafted anything, but we'll be glad to put together whatever the board would like.
Gentlemen, would you, you want to do a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, that's how we're saying that the administration will put together something at his request. He's actually really expressing wants a letter of support, basically, supporting Morphio Mines' desire to become a state park, and any information by way of a letter of support, that is supporting that request would be appreciated. So I would, if it's okay with the chairman, why don't we just ask the administration to put something together and get to us?
Put together and send it out?
And send it out to us.
Okay.
It'd be brief. All right. Next, we have special event permits, part of town, the application's been received to hold part of town on Tuesday afternoons beginning May 7, 2019 until October 15, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All disapprove? Like sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a special event permit, truck and tractor pull. This application has been received to hold a truck and tractor pull on June 22, 2019 from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. This event supports Amelia County County of Fire Department.
This is a very event, Mr. Chairman. I have moved the approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All disapprove? Same sign? This is a very good event. A lot of people get involved with it. County Administration Report, Waste Management, the Hosts.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the Waste Management Hosts fee for March is $37,197.77. That was tracking up just a little bit. Item 10 is the South Side Virginia Community College Newsletter. It's a monthly newsletter that the county gets. Be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have on anything that's on there. Item number 11, the CRC is providing their items of interest for March 2019, includes their new ventures and their activities. Be glad, try to address anything that's on there if a board member would like. Item 12 is the DMV Select Compensation Statement. That is the most recent statement we had, which carried us through the end of February. Looks like we've had a total, total collections of $188,000, and we've been compensated $8,400. If not, item 13, Piedmont Regional Juvenile Detention Center Commission Meeting. That's a monthly meeting. For those who don't know, the Juvenile Detention Center is located adjacent to the Piedmont Regional Jail, and they tend to our youth. The biggest thing that's going on up there is we're going to have to replace a roof. The building's about 20 years old, and that they, we've gotten tired of patching roofs and repairing the damage that the leaks caused, so we should have RFPs back at the next monthly The Extension Service has included, as item number 14, their year-end report. I think this is in lieu of their quarterly report. And as you can see, there's a lot of activity from those three agents, Jane Henderson, Laura Spittle, and Mr. Woodson. Item number 15, Amelia County Department of Elections. They notified us of two bills, HB 2790 and SB 1026. These both deal with absentee balloting. Think for the next presidential election, next year, we're going to be faced with a week-long, no excuse, no reason necessary period for absentee ballots, and they're going to have to find some space. We're going to have to make some changes, do some accommodations for them to be able to pull that off. And I think we've got a good tentative plan. Mr. Whitaker, Darryl Goff, Jerry Wayne Williams, and I met with Mr. Smith, I guess it was last week or the week before, and he seemed to be pretty comfortable with the things we're working on. One of the things we also just thought we might try was put a little pressure on the General Assembly, because Smith thinks that this is just kind of getting the foot in the door, that it'll be a 45-day period a couple of years from now, which will greatly crimp us. We won't be able to offer the space we'll offer next year for an entire 45 days. So we're going to see if we can't do a little bit of lobbying. Maybe they'll turn over some of their local property that's sitting around not being properly utilized. We might be able to acquire some more space to put somebody in then. So that's the, that's the goal. Then the Feed More Report, they've submitted their fiscal year '17-'18 impact report. That's item number 16, and it looks like they're distributing food across 34 counties and cities, helping nearly 200,000 individuals, including 50,000 children. This is something we've contributed to for years at the, at the levels that they've requested. Actually, I think there's a representative from Feed More here now. If anybody had any special questions, I'm sure, I'm sure we could get a good answer. And if not, we'll move on to item 17. This was an adjustment that's already been done to the FY 19 budget. These are things that Carla and I can do without board action, but these are here for your notification. One of them is pulling money out of an account, forfeit asset bank account for the Commonwealth's attorney's use. Historically, he's paid for his cell phone with it. That was $600. There was a $58,000 increase on an expenditure line because the county has received a reimbursement for expenses to date of a PSAP 911 Services Grant Project. This money wasn't budgeted. We didn't know it was coming in. Then we've got an increase of $300 for the library. They received a grant that they didn't anticipate from the Virginia Commission of the Arts. The Sheriff's Office has received reimbursement, insurance reimbursements for repair work on several vehicles. That's $26,630. And the last one, the Sheriff's Office had received $1,068 reimbursement from the state for education. So we put the money in the bank, and this letter is just authorizing appropriation so it could be spent. Item 18 has been taken care of already. That was the Amelia County School Board Supplemental Appropriation Request. Item 19 is the FEMA. They are submitting information regarding the ongoing flood risk project. I think they're just soliciting input from local officials about their program. If anybody has any comments on that, we'll be sure to get it to FEMA. Included as item number 20, the Commonwealth Transportation Board Public Meeting Schedule. The, the one that is easiest for, for our citizens to get to will be held at 4:00 p.m. on April 25 at the Richmond Marriott in Short Pump. These are the bigger projects. The Commonwealth Transportation Board, they're, they're not the six-year type projects or the, anything dealing with maintenance, but if you've got issues with interstates and primary roads, that's where those comments would best be taken. We've got the CRC Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's item number 21. Ken Emerson would like for us to participate with these other communities, to have the CRC develop the plan for us instead of us doing it on our own. And it seemed like just about every county that's had their meeting this month has already approved this. Mr. Kalison, we were hearing about that today. So if, if it was the pleasure of the board, if somebody would make a motion for us to agree to participate in the CRC's development of the mitigation plan, we'll go ahead and, and let them know so they can count us in on it.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
All right. And the last thing of the quarterly reports, anybody that has any questions about anything that's in there? If you would like to ask it, if I can't answer it right now, certainly get you an answer. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the end of the County Administrator's Report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd just like to comment that I think it's awesome that our Animal Control Department has only euthanized animals last year, or this quarter. I mean, they're, they're almost a no-kill shelter.
Yeah, I think the policy is the only thing that gets put down over there is something that's so sick it's not going to recover, or if it's so mean that it just can't be around other animals or people.
Very good. District Three?
I do not.
Mr. Four?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment on our, on our budget, on 2020 budget. I've received positive comments everywhere I go, and so it's a lot, a lot in that budget for one penny increase in real estate. There's a lot in it that's going to get done this, next year in 2020, so I feel good about that, and we will get some long-range things that have been wearing us down, like the cleaning of the water tank and so forth. And of course, that's going to be done in, partially in this budget and next year, so. But anyways, getting rid of some headaches that's been on us, so I feel good about 2020 budget, and I think it'll work out well for the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. District Five?
I have nothing.
All right. I'd just like to say that we could possibly have lost a deputy in an automobile accident. He was in a pursuit, apparently, and something unseen happened, and he told his automobile he just was released from the hospital today, is that much sure? And we're just glad to have him walking on two feet. Anyone have any motion?
Oh, we need to.
Continue?
We need to continue to, what is, what was?
Get your dog. You understand your piece.
For the schedule, Mr. Chairman, for next week, I guess it is, so we can approve the budget, or have opportunity to approve the budget, if we could, because we have to wait till at least next Thursday. Is that correct?
I think that's right.
At least seven days have passed after the public hearing, but the deadlines to adopt before July 1, so you could wait till your next.
Well, I think it'd probably be beneficial for the schools if we would go ahead and, and have something done before May 1, and that would just benefit them with their contractual obligations.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a calendar here, and we've got a new judge that's going to get sworn in in Amelia on the 30th, at 3:00, and everybody's been invited to that. If, if the board members are going to be here for that anyway, if everybody is, that might not be a bad time to, to continue this meeting.
We also have one at 7.
That's right, over at Pickett.
So, Mr. Chairman, should we have it at 2:30, 2:00?
True. 2:00.
That's okay with you. That's okay, on the 30th?
On the 30th?
That's okay.
So.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
So do we need a motion for that? Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion then that we continue this meeting to April 30th at 2:00 at the Administration Building, in the, in the Administration Conference Room.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes the seat. Do you have a motion for a draw?
Oh, right, the tenet.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. You, ma'am, we tell you the prophecy.
Hey, Jim.
Good morning.
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 Good morning.